Okay, I'd like to continue the Gig Harbor City Council meeting for December 13th. We've done the roll call. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every trade and justice.
Okay, are there, are there any changes to the agenda tonight by council?
I would request that, excuse me. Nope, thank you.
Okay, with that, the agenda stands. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Will be approved.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Markley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion passes. Presentation tonight, our first is swearing in a new police officer, Kelsey Bergen-Dove.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and soon to be council members in public. I am delighted to introduce to you our newest police officer, Kelsey Bergen-Dove. She comes to us from the Washington State Patrol, been with them a few years. Kelsey grew up in Puyallup, went to Rocky Mountain College and earned her degree in exercise science. So I think she's going to whip us all into shape or something along the way. She brought her family with her tonight, I think her parents, brother and husband, Austin. In her off time, Kelsey likes to ride horses, walk her dogs, and she's an avid video game gamer buff. So watch out for that too. Might be some bets flying around the squad room. So, so Kelsey worked in this area with the State Patrol and our night officers encountered her quite a bit. And when they knew that she was applying here, they came running to me and said, you have to hire her. So she came widely, highly regarded. Her attitude has been nothing but spectacular through the hiring process and into her first week of training. So very pleased to introduce to you Officer Kelsey Bergen-Dove.
Raise your right hand. I, Kelsey Bergen-Dove.
I, Kelsey Bergen-Dove.
Do solemnly swear that I will bear the true faith and allegiance.
Solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
The state of Washington.
The state of Washington.
Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor.
Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor.
That I will serve them honestly and faithfully.
That I will serve them honestly and faithfully.
That I will obey the orders of the officers appointed over me.
That I will obey the orders of the officers appointed over me.
According to the law and the rules and regulations.
According to the law and the rules and regulations. Of the police department.
And that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of Washington.
The laws of the state of Washington.
Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor.
Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor.
Welcome to our team.
Thank you.
Let's first invite up her husband, Austin.
Yes.
Come on up. And on her badge.
Oh my practice.
Would you like to say just hello or something like that?
Hi. Thank you very much. I am super excited to be here. So thank you to the department and everybody on city council, mayor. I'm very excited to be a part of Gig Harbor. So, thank you.
And let's see. I'm just gonna stay down here because we just got a few more of those. And the both of office, then to the mayor and councilmembers. We'll start with the councilmembers. So please come forward, Brenda Lichten, Roger Henderson, Dorset, and Tracy. Okay, why don't you come forward, Brenda? Please raise your right hand.
You bet.
I, Brenda Lichten, do solemnly swear.
I, Brenda Lichten, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will do to my best of my judgment.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
We want everything from you.
Yes, you do.
Perform the duties of the office of a councilmember.
Perform the duties of the office of a councilmember.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Just a few comments. I just want to thank my family in particular, my husband Jim, who really supported me, my kids who helped with the campaign and just the citizens. Forward to working with and those who have served, I think. And the citizens, most importantly, the citizens of this great city. Look forward to working hard for you.
Thanks.
Need coaching.
Yes, Roger, come forward. Hold your right hand. I, Roger Henderson.
I, Roger Henderson.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And I would do my best of my judgment.
And I'll do the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of the city councilmember.
Perform the duties of the office of the city councilmember.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Fully elected would take office on the third of January because otherwise it's Friday, Saturday, Saturday, Sunday, sorry. Yeah, see, come forward. No, Seth. Seth, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. I, Seth Dorset.
I, Seth Dorset.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of Washington.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of the city councilmember.
Perform the duties of the office of the city council.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
I'll say a few words.
Yes.
Got a second. I just want to first thank my family for being here. My wife, Kelsey, with the camera in the back. My children, Winnie and Wade, six and nine, and also my parents, Linda and Terry, for being here. Also, just very excited to serve this community. It's, it's a privilege to live here. This is a great opportunity. I want to thank all the council and the mayor for all of your work, especially over the last four years and for some longer. So, thank you again.
Right hand. I, Jenny Woo, do solemnly swear that I am a citizen, I'm sorry, I, Jenny Woo.
I, Jenny Woo.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And was, and the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
I would do to my best of my judgment.
I will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of city councilmember.
Perform the duties of the office of city councilmember.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to a second term.
So thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Another four years of listening to our citizens and respecting your voice.
I, please raise your right hand. I, Tracy Markley.
I, Tracy Markley.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will do to my best of my judgment.
And will do to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully.
Truly faithfully.
Diligent, diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
For the city of Gig Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to be new mayor.
Thank you so much to all of you for being here tonight. This has been quite a journey on council so far, and I am looking forward to being your mayor. I'm looking forward to listening and understanding the needs of our citizens, our staff, our, just our wonderful council. I am so excited for the future and what it holds, and I'm just so incredibly honored. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. I got so excited getting sworn in, I forgot to say something. So first off, I'd like to thank my wife for supporting me, Praveen. She's over here in the audience. Raise your hand. Putting up with me for doorbelling almost every night. You have to go out again tonight? You just went last night. Well, all right. I'm honored to be serving the citizens of Gig Harbor. I'm looking very much forward to working with the existing city council mayors and the city council and our new mayor and the city of Gig Harbor, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Okay, with that, our third presentation tonight is accomplishments, accomplishments of the past four years. Josh, can you turn screen over to me?
Yeah, Mayor, you should be getting a pop-up from Zoom to promote you to panelist.
So where, in my mail?
It should be right in the Zoom app. And now you'll have a little green box to share your screen.
Okay, doesn't look like it's there yet. Okay, so this is, uh, it has been an honor to serve as mayor over the past four years. Looking back over the past four years, Gig Harbor has seen incredible amount of work completed in support of the city's established vision statement. The city of Gig Harbor seeks sustainable growth that protects our natural and historical resources while preserving our values, quality of life, and culture. I would like to thank the present, past councilmembers, staff, and citizens, and volunteers for their work to make many of the accomplishments possible. We had a lot of top accomplishments of, of the four years, and this is just an example. These, this band of trees everyone recognizes was going to be clear cut when we, in July of 2018. But it was saved. Early in 2019, we had a residential moratorium. In 2017, we were the fastest growing city in Pierce County. So council and the mayor decided we needed to control growth. We changed codes and regulations to deal with growth and protect our character and make development fair for all, especially development agreements that were providing amenities to the city for deviating from any and many codes. This is just a variety of some of the items that were there, and the, just like the second one, series of short plats, those trees you thought you just saw, they were going to be short platted three times so they could just clear cut all of it and keep no vegetation. We changed a lot of codes that council did with the help. Some of the accomplishments, we supported the Peninsula School District bond to build two new schools and rebuild two existing schools. Planners fast-tracked applications for the new elementary school, saving enough money that the district told us they could rebuild Copachuck and Key Peninsula Middle School with the savings that they did not think they were going to able to receive. We revised the public sign code to clean up our area. We worked with Pierce County mayors to address affordable, attainable housing, created a template for a matrix of shape to be established, which 14 cities have signed on as part of an order to help create attainable housing in Pierce County. And we added culture and art elements to our comp plan. We worked with Pierce County on multiple jurisdictional planning and growth outlook. Now all projects need to go through SEPA. They were not following it since 1995, but we brought that to their attention. Through significant public comment, we updated the city's firework regulations to allow discharge only on July 4th, starting in 2022. And we declined interest in Gig Harbor ferry. I had asked the state, why aren't you working on Highway 16 and you're trying to do ferries? And they told me, well, we're not going to pay for this. Your taxpayers of your own city are going to pay. We would have had to pay for a whole new ferry, a whole terminal, our own taxpayers. So we actually informed Pugetstown Regional Council and Pierce County Regional Council that we did not want it and we're not going to fund it on our taxpayers. It would have caused lawsuits and it would have changed the character of our bay with traffic on the water and land and caused waterfront erosion, erosion. The Boys and Girls Club sold their building and they were dissolved the existing senior center in 2018. Under tough negotiation sessions, they donated $100,000, even though they didn't have to, to the city towards a new facility for them. The city matched this with $100,000 to the Sydney funding for 2022. We declined interest in Tacoma National Regional Commercial Airport. We requested that Pugetstown Regional Council and Pierce County Regional Council and the State Aviation Committee to opt out of having Tacoma Narrows Airport considered as a regional commercial airport like Boeing. Pierce County, the sponsor of the airport, informed these agencies, we wanted to have Tacoma Narrows removed from the list. There will be, there will be continued pressure to build more at the airport as the Puget Sound grows. We removed East Bay from our urban growth area, preserving more rural areas of our bay. And we completed many commercial and retail residential projects, just to name a few, Latitude 47, Metropolitan Market, Hop Farm, and Ocean 5. Spring of 2018, Ansich Net Shed and the waterfront park was completed. We built a human-powered watercraft storage facility to secure canoes, stand-up platter boards, and kayaks for ease of access to the water. Including this was grass crete for beauty and ease of drainage. Artwork included, dock modification, and rebuilding of Ansich Net Shed and the pier for the fishermen, community, and the tourists. We made an agreement with the Gig Harbor canoe and kayak racing team and the fishermen came into a final lease agreement with them towards building of the new human-powered dock, which will probably happen in the next two months. And as I mentioned, this strand of trees was the Hobb property preserved. Within the first few weeks in office as mayor, I made initial moves to acquire the land to preserve 100-year-old forest of 300 trees at the mouth of the harbor that was in danger of being clear cut and developed. With council support, we bought this plot and the other land for 2.5 million, now known as Soundview Forest, a park preserved forever. Just so you know, this was, uh, right in the heart of our town. At first, this was going to be 45, 40 feet tall of a high rise. And then when they found out with the new council, they weren't going to be able to do it, they were going to build 10 mansions in a gated community. And when I asked the Hobb family if we could buy it, they just said, we wondered why you never asked. That was John Barlow's. And this is a house right there that actually is owned by the city. That house, I'm going to cursor right there. So later down the road, when citizens and council gets involved, we can actually do something with that too. The sports complex. Over three years, we worked to successfully negotiate the MOU and later a lease for construction of two lit synthetic turf fields on land purchased by the city. It was agreed to construct 1A by 2024, the YMCA. We also secured state and federal grant funding for 1A and 1B. The YMCA is responsible for 1A with a 99-year lease. The city is responsible for 1B. 1B includes a playground, actually two different age group playgrounds there, bocce ball courts, restrooms, pickleball courts, picnic areas, and walking trails. This was designed with mini open public forums. At Shaw Park, our Gig Harbor Rotary paid and installed musical instruments, another success in partnering with our nonprofits. At a KLM Veterans Park, we finalized the end phase of construction for Park KLM. Was in a 10-year process in two phases, including the 250,000 play structure for all ages. We even got Seahawk colors too. And the school was involved. The city planners worked with students at Discovery Elementary to guide them through what is involved in planning process of making a park, and it's all ADA accessible. One of our biggest accomplishments is Toolacut Estuary at Austin Park. As if anyone knows how recognition can be taken away, the tribe was very supportive of not getting rid of the name Austin Park because they know how that, how that feels. So we actually made it Austin Park at Toolacut Estuary. In partnership with the Puyallup Tribe, we worked to recognize the first peoples of Gig Harbor. While we kept the name Austin Park, we renamed the Estuary Toolacut Estuary, honoring the traditional La Chute See name, meaning the place where game exists. There's two signs down there. Now, these were just put back two days ago, and it actually shows everything that you're looking at when you walk into these parks. One is actually going to be right where the star is, and then one is over in Donkey Park that has another star over there. For the La Chute See language voice box, the mayor with a Puyallup La Chute See language department recorded the verbiage of the voice box to guide pronunciation of the squabob's words. So there's actually a solar-powered box down there, and it was even designed by someone in our art commission. At the Estuary, we provided indigenous peoples' history. Five panels are down there. Here's the ancestral home of one of Western Washington's significant, yet little-known indigenous peoples, the Squabob's Band of the Puyallup Indians. They spoke the La Chute See, and the place was called Toolacut after their village. This group extended from Vashon Island to Wala Chet Bay, and they'll probably tell me it was a lot larger than that, but the panel tells the history of the indigenous people of our area. In 2022, we will see the installation of an honoring symbol down there, a wonderful 17-foot-tall sculpture entitled "Our Fisherman, Our Guardian" by Native American artist Guy Capomen. It's already completed. It's just waiting for the mount, mounting to go and then change of weather. And North Creek Heritage, the land acquisition of 11.5 acres north of Toolacut Estuary, this is only three months ago, it's not even, not even finalized, is intended to assist the salmon reproduction, repopulation, and conservation of forest space, and later trails will be added. The land is of historic and cultural significance to the Puyallup Tribe, and acquisition efforts have been aided by the tribe as well as Pierce County Conservation Futures Fund as well. Even with COVID, the COVID crisis, we were able to increase our city's investment holdings over the last four years. In our finance department, we secured 1 million in grant funding for existing projects. Funds went towards completing the Harbor Hill Drive Extension Project, planning for Phase 5 of the Cushman Trail, and the design of 38th Avenue Improvement Project, currently under construction in 2021. Many years ago, the Civic Center Debt Reserve was, fund was created. In 2021, the mayor and council approved paying 1.5 million in that debt and lowered the interest rate on the remaining 1.1 million. This saved the city 365,000 each year, and in 2026, the balance will be paid off. The Civic Center Certificate of Occupancy had never, had been ignored over 15 years. City staff worked towards completing every item and task up to the highest standard. And Harbor Hill Drive was completed in 2018. The most expensive road in the city was undertaken. Most of the 11.5 million cost came from state and federal grants. This connects Gig Harbor North with the remainder of the city. The city water and sewer was upgraded to a double A-plus bond rating. The city of Gig Harbor's water and sewer utility is now the highest in Pierce County. And on the bottom left, we also added our 13th consecutive wastewater treatment plant award. Outstanding Operation Award from Washington Department of Ecology requires zero violation for 12 months. The plant operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So this is The plant operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so this is a significant accomplishment. We are in the process of constructing sidewalks and more infrastructure, going to two schools with the Pierce County on extension past the city limits line. This was, this was thought of when my daughter was going to the school, and she's 28 now, 27, so it's great to have this going. And the public workshop. Our Public Works crew have long needed a new home. And in 2019 and 20, the city did all the site improvements and permitting necessary for the 3.5 million new public workshop. Site preparation was done, and the building will be completed in 2022. Planning and construction of the Stinson-Rose Dale Mountable Roundabout was completed in summer of 2021, taking the four-way intersection from an F congestion rating to an A. And there's more to come in 2022. We did well upgrades and we did lift station upgrades. Well number 11 now, near the city shop, has the capacity to serve as a backup well to provide all the water needed for the city of Gig Harbor. But you want to take turns with your wells. We reclaimed property that had been encroached on for 15 years. This is down where the old city hall was. We moved a private storage off-city property next to Timberland Bank that had been just ignored and left there. And when we pulled it away, guess what was behind there? Public parking. It freed up about seven parking spaces. We have many more street construction projects to complete in 2022, just to name a few of them is the first, 38th Street, Phase 2. The third is metering the roundabout, SR 16 Burnham Drive Interchange, and Stinson-Harborview Intersection Improvements and a roundabout. Second to the bottom is a lot, a lot more mid-block rapid-flashing beacon crosswalk systems. We secured our municipal court. In 2018, I found we were in danger of losing our municipal court to Pierce County. This was by having interviews with our staff. With the help of council, we gave our assurance and hired the appropriate people to staff our court and give it the stability it needed. Losing our court to Pierce County would mean we would lose control of tougher laws than Tacoma has. Retaining local control allows our citizens to settle infractions here in our own city, therefore keeping the character of our city intact through retraining our jurisdiction. We completed many tasks in our police department, and just to name a few, the first, we recruited and hired two new officers to augment current in staff. You saw one today. We, one additional officer will be added in 2022. And we hired police service specialists. We implemented a full dash and body camera program within the department, just to name a few. In our human resource department, we created a system of fair promotions, overhauling a complex subjects, subjective system leading into financial disaster. Now we are, have a salary increase step program that everyone can contribute to. We had our seventh consecutive well city award. This is an all-city effort awarded from AWC, resulting in a 2% cost reduction in medical premiums, saving the city 30,000 a year. And we avoided third-party hiring, using an in-house resource by adding NeoGov software over retaining third-party search firms. So just to name a few, so we didn't have to spend like $30,000 for a headhunter to find people that we could find ourselves and do a better job. We presented a welcoming city proclamation in 2018. We celebrated Black History Month, formerly recognized June 19th as Juneteenth. We recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day and Native American Heritage Month. And we authorized Gig Harbor Rotary North to set up a sister city program for Gig Harbor with contracts and, with contacts in Croatia and Norway in the works. We're even voting on part of that tonight. We updated our IT department, enabling staff to become more mobile employees by implementing laptops, iPhones, document stations, and tablets for off-site work, just to, just a touch of what we've done in IT. And we revamped our tourism department. We increased external LTAC grants, awarding 125,000 to 19 applicants in 2021, up from, up from $20,000 in 2019. And we hosted Summer Sounds and movie series. We pivoted first to a virtual fundraising music series online in 2020, and then returned in 2021 with a 10-week series of concerts and expanded at the film festival. In tourism, we began high-targeted digital marketing campaigns focused in a destination and hotels. 616 rooms of night, room nights were booked in the first two months of the campaign. A new tourism website was launched in August of 2021, enabled direct bookings from our website, updated event calendar for ease of search results, and heightened focus on our new content. We provide a lot of community support, to just mention a few. With the help of council, we allocated 500,000 to build Fish Food Bank. Land acquisition was granted by the city of the Fish Food Bank in order to build a new home. That was actually their original home. But then in 2021 budget, we granted them 500,000 for the new construction. And the Gig Harbor Boat Shop, we approved 297,000 allocated to railway marine carriages. The Harbor History Museum, we approved 30,000 for free admission. Shouldn't have to pay for a museum to get educated. And we donated 150,000 in 2022 coming up towards their grant opportunity for the Shenandoah. And Wild Watch, Harbor Wild Watch provides the use of Scancy House office space in exchange for a visitor's center volunteer program managed at the Scancy House. Our COVID response was quick. We waived the utility fees, first in Washington State to offer economic relief to utility customers. We waived the basic bill for spring of 2020, representing 588,000 relief to all individuals and businesses, anyone that actually had to use a utility bill. We relaxed special use encroachment permits, and we distributed $380,000 to local businesses through direct support of small businesses. We shifted to a virtual communication. We were the first city in Washington to field questions through a live Q&amp;A each Friday for updates, connecting our citizens in a public forum. The city's conservative fiscal approach served us well when we, when the unexpected was occurring. We didn't know. We reduced expenditures, paused projects. We took early action in March of 2020 to reduce current expenditures. And we postponed some capital projects until we had a more solid idea of the impact. This allowed us to bridge some of the revenue gap. We minimized impact to personnel. Rich resulted in no layoffs. When we found out there was a, at least a third of the other cities in Pierce County had major layoffs, and we did not. We supported the Bands Together series, shifted annual Summer Sounds series to a virtual fundraiser experience in partnership with the Greater Gig Harbor Foundation. Other items, transportation impact fees. These were big. We adjusted the proper funding, raising appropriate funds for smart development. We asked for higher impact fees from developers. Since this had not changed over 10 years, we raised it to $5,071 per dwelling unit from 2,100 that had stayed the same. We could have, we could have tried for 11,000, but we felt this was fair. The average in the Pugentstown is 4,500 to 6,500 per dwelling. This allows infrastructure to be concurrent with development, which was not occurring. And then, we don't want the developers to pay for it all. We asked the voters to share. So in 2019, voters approved increasing sales tax by two-thirds, by two-tenths of a percent to 8.7%, which over 10 years is roughly 16 million for new construction of roads and traffic improvements. This only amounts to 20 cents per hundred dollars, and this remains one of the lowest sales tax rates in Pugentstown region. Both of these allowed us to keep infrastructure concurrent with developer. And actually, everyone that came into our city would pay that sales tax. But the city's citizens would be the ones that would benefit the most because they would be here every day. We revised public work standard to ensure subdivisions allowed for one-side street on off-street parking. The result is additional parking without high-density and adequate parking. Before that, a developer, as many did, they made the whole development redlined, so you couldn't even park on the streets. Now we made it so it had to be on one side, which was fair. We cleaned up Harborview Lot adjacent to the Tides Tavern. We worked with Adele Stutz and his family to help clean up the lot across the street from the Tides that had derelict vehicles and an old garage and abandoned vehicles for over 40 years, and that's being conservative. The Home Report Study was completed for a morage of our commercial fishing fleet. And I'm only touching on some of them, as you can see. Installation of rapid rectangular flashing beacons became much more noticeable downtown and also up in Gig Harbor North were completed as well. An Edinburgh House was rehabilitated for a community rec hall, 13 years in the works. We completed native landscaping at the Storm Pond at the hillside near Burnham Drive Roundabout with 10,000 year committed for beautification, in addition to rooming the Scotch Broom from the area. This concludes our presentation, and I wish to thank all those that helped make this possible. Thank you. And a lot of this, if any council members have anything they'd like to add, this would have not been possible without you and the citizens and the staff. Okay, Josh, if, do I have to give you permission to, let's see?
Yep, there you go.
Okay, with that, thank you all. I have no mayor's report, city administrative report?
Just gonna make a very quick comment. In the budget for 2022, as council will recall, we did include funding to take our code enforcement officer position from a .4 FT to a 1.0 FT. We are as pumped about that as you are. However, I want you to understand that when, most likely, I will be moving our current code enforcement officer to full-time, that means some of the other duties that he's doing need to continue. And until we can hire somebody to do the evidence room and hire somebody to do court security, Adam has graciously said he will continue doing those duties until we are able to transition him to full-time code enforcement, which we are working diligently on to happen as quickly as possible. So just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and we will push forward as fast as we can. And that's my report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff report. Procedure for filling a council vacancy. The report would be from our city clerk, Josh Decker.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you and council members. We just witnessed council member Tracy Markley take her oath of office for mayor. Those also become effective on January 1st. And one of the questions that I'm getting asked quite frequently is what happens next when council member Markley becomes mayor Markley? Creates a vacancy on the city council, so I wanted to take a few minutes to just kind of go over the process that the city is going to go through to fill that vacancy. So the number-one overarching authority on this is RCW 4212 from the state of Washington. A vacancy occurs upon the resignation of an elected officer. Notice must be delivered to the governing body. No person can serve in two elected offices at the same time, so when council member Markley is ready to become mayor Markley, she'll have to formally resign from the city council, and that will trigger this process. The remaining members of the governing body will appoint the new person to fill the vacant position. If the governing body fails to appoint someone within 90 days, then the Pierce County Council gets the duty and responsibility to fill that vacancy. And don't anticipate that's something that's going to come up, though. The appointed council member will serve until the end of council member Markley's term, which is two years from now. The appointed council member, however, will not finish out the complete term because as soon as someone is elected in the November elections, two, two years from now, that person will take over that, that vacant position as soon as they are certified. So that usually happens around the 1st of December. Now, the city council, back in 2013, adopted an administrative policy, A1301. This policy kind of dictates the process we follow as a city whenever we have a vacancy. So once the vacancy is created, which will formally happen as soon as council member Markley resigns from council, council will direct staff to begin the appointment process, will develop an interview and appointment schedule, and will try to get that position filled as early as possible. The council member who is vacating the position cannot participate in the appointment process. However, because council member Markley will be the mayor, she will fulfill the mayor's role in the process, which we'll talk about here in a minute. So for the recruitment process, this starts off, the city clerk shall prepare an advertisement that will be published two consecutive weeks in the Tacoma News Tribune. Those will go out on all of the channels that we have access to, the city's website, Facebook, other social media. We will contact all of our volunteer advisory board members and let them know. We'll let all of our community partners know, the Chamber, the Waterfront Alliance, anyone who might be connected to someone that might be interested in this position. The notice will include qualifications that are necessary to be appointed. Those are the same as a regular council member. That means you must be a registered voter in Gig Harbor, and you must have been a city resident for at least one year prior to your appointment. The notice will include the length of term, the salary, and the powers and duties that council members perform. The city clerk will prepare an online application for interested candidates. The application will include right on it the date and time when we're going to do candidate interviews, so that anyone that's applying will know what's expected of them when they're going to attend. Interviews occur in an open public meeting of the city council. Each council member can submit one question to the mayor to be asked during the interview. Each interview, an applicant should be no more than 30 minutes in length, as follows. And again, all of this is from the policy that council has adopted. And I just want to make clear that this is a policy of council. This is not in the municipal code. This is not even adopted by resolution. It is just what council has adopted as its policy. And that means that when council is ready to undergo this process, if they feel anything needs to be changed, they can make that change by majority vote. So the interview process is the applicant has five minutes to introduce themselves. The council will ask the predetermined set of questions, and each applicant will have two minutes to answer each question. And then there will be an informal question-and-answer period in which council members can ask questions, whatever comes up. The applicant's order appearance for the interviews will be determined by random, and council can reduce the 30-minute time period for the interviews if they feel that's necessary. And if there's more than six candidates, council can actually at that point decide whether they want to interview everyone or reduce the number to six only that they actually interview. Council has the option to go into executive session where they can discuss the qualifications of the applicant. However, they need to do all of their interviews, deliberations, nominations, and votes in open public session. And when it comes time to vote, after all the interviews are done, the mayor will ask for nominations from the council members. No second is required, so we will collect a list of all of the candidates who council members feel should be nominated. The nominations are then closed by a motion, and council members can deliberate at that point on the criteria for selection before they vote. The voting process is a little unusual, as described in this policy. It's not something that we usually do. Council will pass out slips and instruct each council member to write the council member's name on the top of the slip, and then the name of their preferred candidate on the bottom. Then we'll collect and tally all of those slips and see if a applicant has received four votes. If no one receives four votes, then we remove the candidate who received the fewest votes, and we vote again until someone receives a majority vote of the remaining council members. One thing to note in this process is there is no tie, so the mayor will not vote in this process as a tiebreaker. And it's just simply we remove candidates until we have someone who receives four votes. After the voting's done, the mayor will declare the nominee receiving the majority vote as the new council member. They'll be sworn into office by the city clerk, and they'll be ready to attend the next regular city council meeting. The proposed timeline for all of this action, Thursday, December 30th. This is when we anticipate that council member Markley will submit her notice of resignation to the city council. That will allow us to hold a special city council meeting on Monday, January 3rd of the council to start the process for filling a council vacancy. At that time, the city council may look at this policy that I've just outlined and decide, maybe there's some things they want to see done differently, and we can have that discussion at that meeting. On Thursday, January 6th, we'll post the notice in the Tacoma News Tribune, and we'll start getting all of the word out to the community. Thursday, January 13th, we'll post the notice a second time in the Tacoma News Tribune. And Friday, January 14th, we'll close the applications. Tuesday, January 18th, following the Martin Luther King Day holiday, we'll have a special city council meeting to conduct interviews and select a candidate. Tuesday, January eighteenth, following the Martin Luther King Day holiday, we'll have a special city council meeting to conduct interviews and select a candidate. And then that candidate should be able to be appointed and in seat for the first regular or the second regular council meeting in January. These dates are alternative, and they're all subject to the city council's discretion about January third, meaning when we need to get direction. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to clarify for council.
Okay, I don't see any council questions. Uh, thank you very much, Josh. Okay, we will go on to a public comment on non agenda items. So I will open up the public on the public comment on non agenda items. Tony, were there any written comments turned in?
No, your honor.
Thank you. I will open it up for those people that are listening. You press star nine or star six. Just one moment. I do not see anyone from the public raising their hand. Okay, I will close the public comment on non agenda items. Our first item tonight is old business, second reading and adoption of ordinance fourteen seventy-seven. Twenty twenty-one comprehensive plan amendment. Our report tonight is our community development director, Katrina Kucin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The item before you right now is very exciting. It's a long time coming since two thousand eighteen, when the Arts Commission first submitted. An application to amend our comprehensive plan to with for the inclusion of an arts and culture element. This is your second reading, so I will not belabor the presentation. However, I will note for the record that this application was heard multiple times by the planning commission. And when your packet, you do have a recommendation for approval unanimously from the planning commission. On your November twenty-second meeting, you held a public hearing to consider the draft ordinance and hear public comments. The comments provided and heard at that hearing and through the planning commission meetings were generally in support of the amendment. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and I'm available with any questions.
Is there, are there any clarifying questions from council? Okay, then we will open up a public comment. Is, were there any written comments turned in, Tony?
No, your honor.
Okay, I will now open it up to people that are on their computer or on their phone, plus star nine or star six to raise your hand. Anyone from the public. Okay, I will close the public period, comment period, and we will go on to council deliberation and action. Again, this is our second reading. Councilmember Franch.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, as much as I. Support the arts and take a lot of enjoyment in viewing art. I can't support putting this into the comp plan. It's just a. I thought that the Arts Commission, the way it existed prior to this was a system that worked rather well. This just adds more bureaucracy to government, which I believe in smaller government is always better. And. Just in, in reading through the, the goals and the policies here. On page eleven of twelve at the very top, fourteen point one point four, it says. Keep current with community arts and culture needs and trends. Shaping actions to be adaptive and relevant to changing conditions. And then on the next page, we talk about culture and heritage. Understanding the past to guide plans for the future. Identify, preserve, and advance the city's cultural heritage in history. Those two things just seem to be polar opposites. So on one page, we're talking about. Culture and heritage. On one page, we're talking about trends. And, um, you know, the, the way it used to work was the. City council, since other than council member Luke, I don't know if anybody else up here is an artist, but. In two thousand one, we formed the Arts Commission because we thought that. Getting a group of artists together to make art decisions for the city was a better idea than just the council doing it. But those were. Projects that were directed by council to the commission. And I, I just feel this is going to be a runaway train moving forward. It's going to end up costing a whole lot of money, and it's going to just take a whole lot of staff time. So as much as I like art, I, I just don't think it's proper to have it in the top plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luke.
Yes, thank you. For the record, in two thousand eighteen, I served on the Arts and Culture Element Committee, preparing this document. Thank you to everyone in the past who has written, sent in letters, and who has spoken on the addition to the comprehensive plan. Especially at the planning commission. Those words are important. Our comprehensive plan is a statement of what is important to Gig Harbor today and to the future vision of Gig Harbor. Gig Harbor has a rich history of embracing art and culture. For twenty-three years, there has been a summer art festival on Judson Street. Every Friday night before the pandemic, you could listen to music at any number of our coffee shops, and hooray, that's coming back. During the summertime, you can find music on Tuesday nights downtown and films on the weekend. Gig Harbor has a wonderful film festival that is recognized throughout the United States. We have carved wood from down trees in several parks around town. The most recent culture and native art from the Honoring Project is due to be installed soon at Twalcott Estuary. Prior to the pandemic, Gig Harbor citizens completed a survey stating how important arts and culture are to the life in Gig Harbor. We know arts and culture matters to our citizens because they attend these events. They support these events with their dollars. These arts and culture dollars contribute to the economic engine of Gig Harbor. Arts and culture may play a major part of life in Gig Harbor, and it is time that it's recognized. Adding an arts and culture element to our comprehensive plan sends the word to our community and others. That Gig Harbor recognizes the value of arts and culture to our citizens, community, and to the economy of our city. Adding an arts and culture element to our comprehensive plan will also allow these arts organizations. And individual artists to apply for grants and to state on their grant applications. That this is a city who supports arts and culture by having it in our comprehensive plan. Thank you to the planning commission for recommending the inclusion of an arts and culture element to our comprehensive plan. I move to adopt ordinance number fourteen seventy-seven, adding a new arts and culture element to the city's comprehensive plan. Second.
Uh, council member, uh, Denson second it. Any further discussion? Yeah, I am, I used to be on the Art Commission way back, and I'm an artist, and I'm, I'm glad this is moving forward. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Okay, motion passes six to one. With that, we will go to our second item, which is a second reading of adoption of ordinance fourteen seventy-eight, updating parks related codes. Tonight, it's from our public works director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, with this ordinance that you have before you tonight, staff is proposing to update multiple sections of the city's municipal code. Uh, this is in order to better manage how the city operates at city parks. As noted in the council bill and as discussed at the first reading, uh, there are three distinct adjustments that are being proposed. Uh, the first one is the creation of a new section of code. That's chapter eight point twenty-three. This will create rules for the community paddler's dock, which is currently under construction. Uh, the second section has some minor adjustments to chapters eight point two eight. Which is Jerisich Dock rules and eight, or sorry, and nine point two four, which is the park rules. The last section, uh, is staff recommending adjustments to subsection in chapter nine point twenty-eight, the parks rules. That prohibits the use or discharge of fireworks in city parks. After the first reading on November twenty-second, staff revised the proposed park hours as requested. In two different places in this proposed code, which is eight point twenty-three point zero five zero and eight point twenty-eight point zero five five. Park hours are now read as follows. The public is permitted to access the dock. This is community paddler's dock and Jerisich dock. And the associated upland boat storage building or Jerk it or Jerisich Dock uplands. Beginning at dawn as defined in municipal code nine point two four and ending at six P M or dusk, whichever is later. So those are the only changes that were provided since the first reading. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I also might add, I informed Coach Allen Anderson about those changes, which he had spoken, and he was fine with all that. It gave him. If you look at what Jeff had just mentioned, it gives you plenty of time after dark to address his concerns. Any clear, uh, councilmember Franch?
Yeah, uh, Jeff, um, how do the, the, are the, what are the rules for the, um? Maritime pier?
Uh, they are, um. I'd have to go look to verify, but my recollection is that they are operating under the same hours as park hours, but I'll look that up as we're talking here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, uh, is it a, a specific section in the, in the code that, you know, because. The commercial fishermen, they need to use that at certain tides.
Yes, and I believe, well, let me look, let me look.
And I'm sorry for the, it, it just popped into my head this afternoon, so I, I apologize for not getting back with you earlier. I, I'm assuming that the council at the time recognized the fact that, you know, the boats may need to be there in the dark.
Yeah, I don't know if that is the case, but let me, sorry, let me get back to this. Sorry, my computer is.
That's okay.
Hesitating. There we go. Okay, maritime pier has its own section of code under. Chapter eight point two nine, so that's what I'm looking at right now. Uh, there's a time limit, but it doesn't have under that section specific hours, so therefore we'd have to go back to. Chapter nine point twenty-four, which is parks. And that is being proposed to be revised, as noted, as noted in this ordinance. To be six P, the park is open until six P M or dusk, whichever is later.
Well, uh, yeah, like I apologize again for the late. It just came to my mind this afternoon, as I said, but maybe that, well, this is a second rea, I don't know, maybe the future council can, and you can. You know, maybe come back and revise that, uh. Eight point or nine point two four to clear, clearly spell out that that dock can be used at night.
Okay, I, I, I will keep that in the back of my mind. I'm going to talk to Chief Busey about if we're having issues with that, if there's enforcement issues, if not. But we, we can consider that to change, uh, existing code to address. Commercial fishing vessels operating at maritime pier outside of those hours.
Thank you.
I have a feeling that there's some gooey duck people that already do that. So, Councilmember Rodenburg.
Is, would it be easier if we just amended this, um, adoption? This and excluded the maritime pier or set some hours right now, then we wouldn't have to come back.
Well, I think we'd have to come back anyway, because we would like to focus and add a new section of coder into the maritime pier. Operating hours that would be specific for the maritime pier only.
Yep.
Okay, as long as we can get it done before. July next year.
Sounds good. Okay. Uh, we will open up the public comment period. Were there any written comments sent in, Tony?
No, your honor.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this, please raise your hand, star nine or star six. Okay, I will close the public comment period and go back to council deliberation and action. Councilmember Heims.
Yes, move to approve ordinance number fourteen seventy-eight, establishing new parks related code updates.
Councilmember Luke second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes seven zero. New business, public hearing, first reading and adoption of ordinance fourteen seventy-one, I'm sorry, fourteen seventy-nine. Vacating a portion of Hall Street. Our report tonight is from Public Works Director Jeff Langham.
Thank you again, Mayor. Um, I'm going to take control of the screen here for a moment. I'm going to start by showing the location of. Of the property. There we go. Okay, I know it's small, it's, uh. It's essentially in, uh, right along, um, Milton Avenue, between Milton Avenue and Goodman Avenue. Uh, this request for you tonight is the, for the vacation of a portion of Hall Street right of way. Which is under the state's non-user statute for right of way vacations. I just want to be clear, um, some of you have asked, I'm sure the public has too. Where is Hall Street? Well, Hall Street, the name Hall Street is not an official city street name. Rather, the name Hall Street was assigned to this section of right of way. When the plat for the Artina plat was originally subdivided in eighteen ninety. So it was assigned during the subdivision process, but a roadway was never constructed, and so there was never a road officially named Hall Street. That's why you've never heard of it. But now I'm going to switch over and focus in on the actual property that we're talking about. That changes. There we go. And again, it's hard to see. This isn't provided in the packet. This is a part of the. Part, part of the council bill that was, that was included in your packet. Per R C W, the city must vacate this right of way unless we are using it for transportation purposes. And or we have existing utilities in the right way. If we have existing utilities, we still vacate the right of way, but we actually require the assignment of utility easements. In this section of right of way, we don't have any utility easements, as noted on the drawing. In this scenario, uh, Mr. White is the adjacent property owner requesting the vacation. The city staff is recommending maintaining a small triangular portion for operating the existing hammerhead that exists. At the intersection of Milton Avenue and what would be Hall Street for the turnaround at the dead end of Milton Avenue. Uh, this ordinance is requesting passage at first reading, since state law requires the right of way to be formally vacated. Through the, uh, non-user statute process. Uh, we had a resolution setting a public hearing for tonight, and so I would ask that the mayor open that public hearing as appropriate, and. I'd be happy to answer any questions after that.
Any clarifying questions for Jeff from council? Okay, we will open up the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Uh, Tony, were there any public comments sent in?
No, your honor.
Okay, now we will turn to our, oh, I'm sorry, anyone in the audience at any given time, please, uh, when I do the. I say if anyone's on, online, please feel free to also walk up to, as, as you know, you could, anyone from the public. To raise their hand or come forward. Okay, I will close the public hearing and go back to council for deliberation and action. Councilmember Franch.
Thank you. Uh, I wouldn't want to disappoint anybody. I, I support the action, but I'm going to stay true to form.
Okay. Would someone make a motion? Councilmember Luke.
I move to adopt ordinance number fourteen seventy-nine, vacating a portion of Hall Street at first reading. Second.
Let's remember, Markley second it. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain. Motion passes six to one. Our second item tonight. Is resolution twelve twenty-seven amending resolution six oh one, establishing a sister city policy. The background of this is we've actually spent many years uh working with. The Rotary, we did have a sister city way back, but working with the Rotary to establish a sister city relationship. The policy provides a pathway for local five oh one C organizations to propose and support sister city initiatives, activities. Over the past year, volunteers from Gig Harbor Rotary groups have been exploring potential sister city partners. Gig Harbor Rotary groups are five oh one C organizations and are not currently eligible to operate as sister city affiliations. Under the existing city policy. Resolution twelve twenty-seven amends the policy to allow their participation. The volunteers of Rotary have identified the cities of Manila and Sep- Selka. Croatia and Bodie, Norway, as potential partners of the sister city of Gig Harbor. Manila and Selka are neighboring cities on the island of Brock, population thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty-four. They're probably about thirty-five miles apart. Brock is a coastal city located on Norwegian seas in the Salton region of Norway with a population of fifty-five thousand. Mayor Kuhn and Mayor-elect Markley have begun the process of meeting with representatives, mayors of each of these cities via Zoom. Some of these we've done for about two years. Any agreements to enter into partnership with these cities will be presented to council for approval. Any clarifying question from council? Okay, with that, I will open it up to public comment. The public comment period is now open, uh, Tony Pasecki, were there any written or sitting?
Nothing in writing, your honor.
Okay, does anyone from the public right here or online wish to raise their hand? Star nine, star six, or, or step forward. Okay, I will close the public comment period, uh, and seek council deliberation and action. Councilmember. Member Luke.
Well, this is exciting, and it's something that I certainly am going to support. So it's wonderful to think that we will have a, a, a relationship with some folks in Croatia. And some folks in Norway to be sister cities with our city, and hopefully we can. Trade and visit each other and we'll all learn more about what's going on in Croatia and how it works and. And they'll come over here and learn about Gig Harbor, so I, I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll just add a. Thank you to the Gig Harbor Rotary groups um for taking the lead on this and the group of citizens that has formed the sister city. Committee, they've been working hard, they've had some events already, and we're really thankful to you for um taking the lead and running with the sister city program.
Thank you, Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you, this, um, this has been very, and a very exciting process to be a part of. Over the last couple of months, um, meeting with the sister city group that has been working so hard for so many years. To establish these relationships, um, it's been a pleasure to Zoom with the mayor of Buddha, Norway. And also the mayor of Milna, uh, on the island of Brach, and um. I'm just, I'm looking forward to um, to this endeavor, our school district is on board, we are looking forward to. Having kids be pen pals with each other in our school, our school districts and. Just a lot of different ways that we can uh learn, learn from them and they can learn from us. And um, just hope this is supported tonight so that we can move forward, thank you.
Would you, with that, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion, I move to adopt resolution twelve twenty-seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Motion passes seven zero. I'd like to thank um, the citizen and community advocate Bob Anderson, who's here in the audience. Uh, Bob was, I don't think this would have happened without Bob, I'm sure it would have not. Bob was very, could you raise your hand, Bob? Thank you, Bob was instrumental in making all these connections, being very patient. With cities um halfway around the world, so Bob, thank you very much, we both wanted to get this done before I was done with my term. And again, very much appreciate all your hard work. Our third item tonight under new business is first reading and adoption of ordinance fourteen eighty. McCormick Creek Phase Three rezone from R one to P R D. P L, parentheses, P L F P R D. Space nineteen zero zero three. Uh, report tonight is our sitting plant, senior planning. Kimberly Mahoney, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, next agenda item is for your consideration of ordinance number one four eight zero, which will approve the McCormick Creek Phase Three site to be rezoned from the R one single-family residential zone to the. P R D planned residential development zone. McCormick Creek Phase Three preliminary plat and preliminary P R D proposed the development of approximately fifteen and a half acres with fifty-four single-family residential lots and associated infrastructure. The project was conditionally approved by the hearing examiner on April twenty-fifth of two thousand eighteen, whose authority to act on these matters in Gig Harbor is granted by the council by the adopted municipal code. On January thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, McCormick Creek Phase Three's civil plan was approved, allowing the plat's civil infrastructural improvements to be developed. Phase three of the McCormick Creek plat is subject to a development agreement, which was originally approved in two thousand eleven and has since undergone two amendments, the last which was agreed to and recorded in two thousand seventeen. Largely, the second amendment to the development agreement allowed for an increase in the number of residential lots from one hundred and fifty-seven to one hundred and seventy. The second amendment to the development agreement also removed the three non-residential lots that were previously agreed to and incorporated one lot that was intended for public private services use. This lot can be seen today as the public parking lot that's developed above the underground storage system, excuse me, stormwater system as a part of phase two's lot number one. After staff thorough review of the final plat and the final P R D criteria of approval and of the applicant's adherence to all conditions of approval. The Phase Three final plat and final P R D were approved by council uh via adoption of resolution, resolution twelve twenty-five on this evening's consent agenda. Council's adoption of ordinance fourteen eighty permits the community development director to effectuate the necessary changes to. The city's official zoning map, which will represent the plat's new zoning as approved by resolution twelve twenty-five. Staff has recommended that the council move to adopt ordinance number fourteen eighty tonight at its first reading, as is allowed by Gig Harbor Municipal Code. One point zero eight point zero two zero, I'm happy to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kim. I don't see any clarifying questions, so we will go to public comment. Uh, we are opening up the public comment portion of this meeting, uh, Tony, were there anyone that submitted?
Nothing in writing, your honor.
Okay. Yeah, anyone from the public, please come forward. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, my name's Dennis Day, I'm at forty-nine sixty-four Admiral Street, which is in with the McCormick Creek Phase Two.
Can you put that speaker a little more towards you, sorry?
There's what happened. Through the mask. Uh, first, I want to thank the council for the, uh, the mayor and the city staff tonight with such a incredibly jam-packed uh agenda, I don't think I've ever seen an agenda this long. Here, but maybe I haven't noticed. I, I come here because this development agreement that was done in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. To saddle homeowners with a parking lot for the benefit of the public is just simply not right. It's something that you wouldn't do today. You wouldn't, you wouldn't do this type of a development agreement today. It's going to create a great mess for us when this is all done. Even though I understand allocating the expenses to the Phase Three and the responsibility for it. We have to manage a homeowners association at some point, and we've had really no voice in this process. Uh, we, 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 we have no control over the HOA, it's still. Uh, under the control of, of, of the developer, the decorant, and won't have long after. Uh, he's gone, right, I mean, because he's going to sell this to a, to a home builder. Who's going to take some amount of time to complete the houses and then we take over. We don't understand how we're going to ensure it. We don't understand how um, we can allocate the expenses in a blanket homeowners association that covers. A hundred and, what is it, seventy lots? With only fifty-four of them being assessed. For the uh, the maintenance and the liability of owning this for, that's for the public benefit. And, and I, I just want to come up and express that I think this thing is something that was wrong in the first place, I think that. The city has determined, uh, mayor with your leadership and, and with all of your leadership. That these development agreements are dangerous, this is a perfect example of how a well-intended. Quid pro quo, getting a city benefit, getting a private, this, we're not, we're not a high-rise. Uh, office building in downtown Seattle where you're doing this for things like having uh. A, a, a public area space for people to enjoy, this is really being saddled by individual taxpaying homeowners. And it's, it's not right, so I wanted to come in and express this tonight, and uh, I'm glad that it's. On the calendar finally, I mean, there is some good news in all this, which is getting it built out and getting that scarred property with something on it, but it's. It's not right that we end up with that, but thank you for your time, three minutes about that.
Yes, come forward.
I brought my squeaky shoes. Good evening and thank you for your time, my name is Stephen Ainsley. I'm also a resident of McCormick Creek at four nine seven two Admiral Street. It's also Phase Two. And I was very impressed with the presentation tonight of all the accomplishments of the last four years. Particularly impressive to me was the uh idea that um. Uh, the goal was for fair development for all. And I do not believe that this parking lot. Put over the storage facility of water is fair development for all. Our homeowners association, as Dennis said, um, we have had no control over it to date. We will not until all the uh houses are developed in Phase Three and sold. And then we will be able to maintain our own how, um, homeowners association. Uh, and it will only be like Dennis said, only one portion of the HOA. Or the, the plat development will be responsible. For the maintenance of this parking lot. Maintenance, insurance, policing, um. And I don't see how this will happen when there are four phases, four plats in the, in the um. Uh, in the HOA, and I want to be responsible for this. Uh. I, again, I, I hope that the council will consider its goal of being fair development for all. And I don't see it in this case, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, either in the chamber or online? Uh, either plus star nine, star six, or come forward? Okay, I don't see any other, I will close the public comment portion. And refer back to council for deliberation and action. Councilmember Rodenburg.
Yes, thank you, um, Councilwoman Markley, I believe you've had some personal experience with something just like this, did you not? And I'd kind of like you to explain um, your experience with the parking lot where you live. And how that turned out, I mean, that's an example of something that's already been done uh after the fact.
Yes, I was hesitant to say anything uh tonight, but I live in this neighborhood as well. Um, I have found out that I am allowed to vote on this because it doesn't directly affect me fiscally. To put it bluntly, this has been a nightmare for our neighborhood. Um, we were not aware that this parking lot was being built, we were not aware that it was being considered. It was passed right before the outgoing council in two thousand seventeen uh left, and the new council came on in two thousand eighteen. And um, a neighbor of ours happened to find, she, she came to City Hall to do a public records request for something. Something related to the neighborhood and received a bunch of maps and, and plats, and. She saw the second amendment to the development agreement, and she called me, and she said, have you seen this? What do you, what is this parking lot about and what's going on? And so we started investigating as neighbors, and we had multiple meetings here at City Hall, we had a hundred, over a hundred people come to testify. Uh, the developer showed up, he wanted to talk with us, and uh, we still left without a resolution of what was going to happen. Um, this parking lot going in above the storm, the, the stormwater pond was originally above ground. And what this development agreement did was place a parking lot over an underground stormwater system. And originally, there was no language in the documentation that, that, that um. Took our responsibility away as an entire plat, and so we bought our homes. Prior to this development agreement amendment even happening, there was nothing on our title reports saying we'd ever be responsible for a parking lot. And so to make a very long story short, um, we have, as uh Mr. Day mentioned, we have four. Phases in our HOA, Phase Four, which is Cornelia Court. Had, is a totally separate short plat, they are not subject to our plat and P R D requirements for impervious surfaces or for anything else. Phase Three, the one that will be under construction shortly. They are, they are now the ones, our future neighbors and friends are the, are going to be saddled with this parking lot responsibility. And I agree, it's been wrong from the beginning, it's still wrong. Um, I truly believe the city should look into what it would cost to maintain this parking lot themselves. Because liability insurance would not go up, and it would be a drop in the bucket for the city to take this on. For fifty-four homeowners, which I don't even, I, I don't trust that the builder or the real estate agents are going to tell these people that they're going to be responsible. It's in documentation, but how many people read the stack this big when you buy your house? Not really anyone, you just sign, and so these people are going to be in our HOA, they're going to be people we wave at in the mornings and walk our dog and talk to. And so it's always bothered me that the only solution we could come up with was shackling these new homes with this responsibility. Because, and the, and the idea from the hearing examiner was, well, they will know this before they buy their house, because it'll be, there'll be a note on their title report. That will say this is your responsibility, and there will be a separate amendment to the covenants, conditions, and restrictions for these fifty-four houses. But as mentioned, we, we have four phases with three different sets of rules. Phases one and two are together, phase three is, is separate in their responsibility, and then phase four is, is separate. But because of the impervious surface issue with this parking lot. It put our entire plat and P R D way over the allotted amount for impervious surfaces, so we. Lost personal property rights in being able to modify our yards, we can't put anything in our backyards that is gravel. Pavers, anything like that, we have to have approval from the city. Um, we have neighbors that have just said, forget it, I'm doing it anyway, and so our stormwater systems are all at risk. Because we've had people concrete their entire backyards, and so it's been, it's been um, a mess, and so. I would hope that in the future, you know, either this council or future council could consider. Um, investigating with staff what it would cost for the city to maintain and take over the liability of this parking lot and remove that from these fifty-four homes. Remove it from our HOA, because it is going to be a, a mess when we finally take over our HOA. So I wasn't going to say all that, but you know, I've been waiting for four years to say this on the record, so I guess it's to, I guess it's about time, so. Thank you, Councilmember Rodenburg, this has been very stressful for our neighborhood, extremely, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, just one sec, so I was in the thick of it when we had um, a hundred people or something from the three different uh subdivisions come here. And they didn't want to be saddled with something that they did not know when they had already bought their home. So I agree with that, and so, um, so we ended up saddling the one that was not built yet. But I also don't want to, you know, the development agreements, even though I don't agree with most of them. Uh, we, we gave that developer something, that developer. We gave that developer something. That developer got something for that. And maybe they get 10 extra homes. I'm not sure. But I also, I want to, you know, if we, if we change something, I don't think we should be awarding the developer, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars more for getting out of something that he, he got something for that. And I'd like to know from Katrina or Kim, what, what did they get? Because they, they got something. I think they got more, more homes.
I believe that it was 13 homes. The density was increased by, was increased 13 homes where the were given over what would have been allowed.
The question, could you, if we did, if the city did take it over, can we get rid of those 13 homes? Because otherwise, it's not fair to let the developer walk away with millions of dollars.
No, and I want to take this opportunity to remind the mayor and council that this action is just considering the rezone from R1 to PRD. The final plat and final PRD have already been approved under your consent agenda.
Okay, Councilmember Himes.
Ah, yes. By the way, I agree with the comments here tonight. And that is the reason late in 2019, we banned development agreements and we banned PRDs. The basic codes of Gig Harbor were good. PRDs and development agreements were what I call get out of jail cards. You can build anything you want. Don't worry about the codes. And that's exactly what happened. There's a trail behind these things that's just horrible, to put it mildly. And by the way, to the, to the new council, whatever you do, do not reinstate PRDs and development agreements. It's, it's a, it's basically, it's like hand them a loaded gun, the developers. They will, they will go crazy. And they did, and they have. Good example in this particular plat we're talking about tonight. Originally was R1. When the dust settled between the development agreements and the PRDs. The lots in there are essentially right on the edge of not making, in some cases, not making an R2 lot. Okay? In fact, some are down close to R3, to 4,700 square foot lots. Okay, when you started with over 10,000 square feet, gross square feet per dwelling, that's the kind of of diminishment that we saw. This is dramatic. We're in a unique situation here tonight, and I'm going to call upon our council to explain the situation called the decisions that have led up to this point. Essentially, other than the development agreement with the council, okay? Have essentially been out of the council's hands. They've been in the hands of the hearing examiner. And the, the basic framework was set up by the council. But once that's set up, this thing's on autopilot. And I guess I'd like, like Daniel Kenny to explain a little bit how this works. Because if this were, if this were a regular discussion, meeting tonight, where council had true authority over the action here. Boy, I would go after it with all guns blazing. Call this, this is ludicrous. Okay? So Daniel, I'm going to let you explain what the, what the process is developed by lawyers that led us to this point.
Adopted by council. So, you know, I'm, you're putting me in a tough spot here because what's, what's before council right now is an ordinance on a rezone. The ordinance on the rezone comes from Gig Harbor Municipal Code 1789130 that requires an ordinance to be prepared and presented to you for adoption to effectuate the rezone from the PRD that's already been approved. And so while all of these comments are 100% valid and legitimate comments, they don't pertain to what's before you right now. I'm happy to talk to anybody about PRDs and your code and how it works. I'll just quickly say that you are at the end of a very long process that Kim summarized very well and very quickly. To get to where you are right now, all of that process was adopted by council and followed by staff. And when it needed to come to you per the adopted procedures from your city code, it did come to you like it is right now. And so I would encourage you to focus on the agenda item, which would be the appropriate use of this time. That's what was noticed. That's what's before council right now.
Okay, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, can you tell me what would happen if we, if we reject this?
I mean, respectfully, you already approved this in the consent agenda. This is merely a formality to put it into an ordinance to follow it through.
So we really don't have an option to reject this?
No, your city code says that this is the final step in what you've already approved.
All right. So I totally agree with Councilmember Himes. I, I'm, I'm to see our PRDs go is one of the best thing that ever happened next to development agreements go. And it is a sad thing, this whole development on this particular issue is a mess. It has been a mess since before we ever got on this council. And sadly, the only option we have tonight, I think, is to pass this if I'm listening to my attorney. Thank you.
Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make clear, I am not upset with staff in any way. Staff has done an amazing job throughout this entire very lengthy process to get us to this point. We need to pass this. We need final plat approval so that this can transfer to the builder. They can, and then we can retain control or obtain control of our HOA. Maybe, I don't know if I can make a formal request to bring something back to the agenda to discuss the parking lot specifically at a later date, if that's possible. But this needs to pass tonight so that we can move this plat forward. Absolutely, for sure. This, this process, we've been waiting a long time for this final plat approval. So my comments were not to say that we don't want to pass this. We do, it needs to pass. But I will request at a later date that we talk about this parking lot issue specifically and, and see what maybe can be done for, for these neighbors.
And I would like to assure Councilmember Markley, we did not take your comments in any way, shape or form to be against staff. As a matter of fact, staff did what they were required to do per the code. And I appreciate council understanding that. We are frustrated with this as you are. We understand the impact that it has on the community. We know why council removed the ability to do PRDs and development agreements from the code. It is unfortunate that it is part of our duty to bring these things to you when it is time for you to approve them.
Yeah.
So thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, and I could thank the gentleman that came and gave public comment. And as you can see, you probably didn't get the resolution that you wanted. But I can tell you that I will help push along with the incoming mayor to see if we can't get the city to help out. So these new residents, your new neighbors, aren't going to be throwing rocks at your cars as you drive through anymore. So thank you very much for coming.
Okay. Do I have, Councilmember Wook?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number 1480 at first reading. Reading is allowed by GM GHMC 1.08.020 dash C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, Councilmember Markley?
Yep.
And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
No.
Vote passes five to two. Abstain. Vote passes five to two. Okay, our fourth item is Resolution 1226 adopting, I'm sorry, Councilmember Anderson.
I was gonna ask if we could have like maybe a five or 10 minute recess?
Sure, let's do five minutes, you know, thereabouts. Seven minutes, okay, seven minutes if no objection. Please, Josh, please turn off three quarter. Go ahead and start. Okay, we are on resolute, we are on new business number five. Four, four, Your Honor, sorry. Resolution 1226 adopting ADA self evaluation and transition plan for the public right of way. Report tonight is our city engineer, Trent Ward.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. But tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the final version of the city's ADA self-evaluation and transition plan for the public right of way for adoption by Resolution Number 1226. At the November 22nd council meeting, we presented the draft plan to council, held a public hearing to receive input and comment on the draft. On November 30th, we compiled all of the public input that was received throughout the public comment period, which was conducted during the month of November. And Josh, if you could put the slide up on the screen, please.
Give me one second, Mayor. Let's give me some problems.
I've got a slide that just quickly summarizes the changes to the plan since you saw it on November 22nd. And it's quick. Okay.
Can you see that?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so this slide before you on the screen summarizes the edits that were made to the draft that you were provided on the 22nd. First item, we, we removed draft from the title page and updated the plan to be dated December 2021. Secondly, we revised Plan Section C dot three, the barrier removal costs and schedule to show the 25 year timeframe for the plan being 2022 through 2047. Provides the timeline and calculations explaining the cost estimates to achieve right of way curb ramp compliance citywide within a 25 year period of time. The third thing we did was revise the Plan Section E, Public Engagement, to reflect all of the final survey responses and feedback that we received during the November 9th Public Works Committee meeting and the number, November 22nd council meeting. And the last thing that we did was revise Plan Section F Accessibility Regulations to include some reference and links to recommended on-street accessible parking standards. So this concludes my presentation. This, this time I'd like, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I do look forward to council's adoption of this plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, Trent, can you give me a little more explanation on Section F?
Yes, Section F, I believe during some of the prior meetings, there was questions about what are the standards and requirements for on-street accessible parking stalls? And that is not an element of this plan that, that we're requesting council to adopt tonight. But we put in there a reference that is the 2011 ProWAG. So it's not law, but it's best available information for recommendations on when and where to provide parking within the right of way to meet ADA.
So does that mean that that will be looked at in a more timely manner than you were talking about two months ago, say?
It, it is, I believe, Councilmember Francis, your comments in this regards are actually included in the plan.
That's.
As a, more of a, a request to prioritize that.
Very, that's what I wanted to clarify. Very, very good. I appreciate that. I think it's an important element for all the community members to have a little more access to disabled parking on, on-street. So.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions from council? With that, I will open up the public comment. Tony, were there any written comments sent in?
No, there weren't, Your Honor.
Okay, now I will open it up for anyone in the audience or anyone listening to push star nine or star six. Okay, I don't see that. We will close the public comment period. Did you have any other question?
I'm just gonna make a motion.
Okay, now we, Councilmember Francis.
Yeah, I move to pass Resolution Number 1226.
Councilmember Himes?
Second.
Need further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes seven zero. New business number five, purchase authorization for air gap brake tank system. Report tonight is from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. The request before you tonight is for the purchase of an air gap brake tank system, which is a very specific term for a backflow preventer. Providing this authorization will provide for the installation of a high-capacity backflow preventer as required by the Washington State Department of Health and the City of Gig Harbor. The city currently has a backflow preventer at the site, but it does not provide for adequate flow rates that are required with the higher ever-increasing operational demands at the treatment plant. So the purchase of this backflow preventer has been anticipated since 2019. But due to other constraints, the city is just now proceeding with the purchase and installation of the system. Once purchased, the city's operation or wastewater treatment plant crew will install the air gap. That's my report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from council? I'll open up the public comment portion of this business item. Tony?
We've received nothing in writing, Your Honor.
Okay, anyone from the public in the audience or online wish to comment, please press star nine, star six, or come forward. Okay, I will close the public comment portion. Council deliberation in action. By the motion, Councilmember Himes.
Move to approve the air gap brake tank system for Puntec for the price quotation of $4,000, $43,465.60.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Markley, second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain, motion passes seven zero. Our next item is new business number six, more memorandum of understanding with Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife for Ancestral Park Advance Mitigation. The report tonight is from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted in your council bill, the proposed memorandum of understanding from the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife will allow for the demolition of the dilapidated Jerkovich Pier located at the city's Ansich Waterfront Park and be used for future mitigation for the future commercial fishing home port float system also located at the park. Usually, these types of projects, demolition and construction of new overwater structures would be proceeding together. But due to timing, the city is looking to proceed with removing the Jerkovich Pier before constructing the commercial fishing floats. By signing the MOU from Fish and Wildlife, the city will be allowed to use the pier removal as future mitigation for the proposed commercial fishing home port float system if the construction is completed within 10 years of the date of the agreement. That, that's taken right out of the MOU. As you know, the existing pier has begun to fail. It's fall, some of it has fallen into the seabed of Gig Harbor. And by removing the pier now, this may prevent more of the pier from falling into the bay. But also by removing the dilapidated pier now, we will also be able to provide a cleaner look to Ansich Park for the public and by removing any future parts of the pier that may fall into the waters while paddlers are getting in and out of that area in front of Ansich Park. Without approval of this MOU, staff will not be recommending approval of the associated public works contract that is next on the agenda. So I am happy to answer any questions. I know there's been a lot of email correspondence back and forth from the public on this. So I am happy to answer any questions. I know there's been a lot of email correspondence back and forth from the public on this. All, if there's any questions on that, happy to answer that also. But that's the end of my report at this point.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, Mr. Langham. So under the information and background, it says in that third paragraph, the city may be allowed to use some or all of the dilapidated pier removal as future mitigation. So what we've been looking for is a hundred percent guarantee, as you know, to make sure that we don't take down this pier and then are not allowed to use it for mitigation. I think we all understand that it may not be exact, we may not be able to use all of the Jerkovich portion for mitigation because of the differences in underwater flora and fauna. We we get that. That would be this case next year as well as if we waited for two years. So there's no difference there. Do we have a hundred percent guarantee that we can use that? The destruction of this pier, the taking down of this pier is mitigation for the home port pier?
Well, I can't say we have one hundred percent guarantee because, and I don't think you would ever get one hundred percent guarantee from either the federal agencies or the state agencies. The word in the council bill may is a word that I used expressing permission. And so what I will turn the council back to is actually in the MOU itself on page three, under the section at the very bottom memorandum of understanding, the third bullet says WDFW will consider removal of the Jerkovich Pier as all or part of the required mitigation for construction of the fishing home port project. Now, I want to be very clear why, one reason why they may say all or part of is doing some quick math and is noted in the MOU itself, the removal of the Jerkovich Pier is one thousand five hundred fifty eight square feet of overwater coverage. Looking at the resolution twelve ten that City Council adopted earlier this year, moving forward with a conceptual layout of the commercial fishing home port floats, that alternative that was adopted under twelve, resolution twelve ten actually has a total square footage cut overwater coverage requirement of one thousand six hundred twenty square feet. So we're about seventy square feet short. So without having that final number of the future commercial fishing home port floats identified, that's one reason why I see that bullet that I just read from DFW in the MOU says all or part of required mitigation.
And I would like to add that how much of it is used is all based upon the science and the study that is done. What the impact is on the aquatic flora and fauna, as Councilmember Jensen put it. But there's another aspect of this that we should talk about, not just the overwater covered, but the fact we have pre-soaked soiled pilings in there, correct?
Yes, there are.
That would be removed. And what will be built with or used with the commercial home port will be stainless steel?
It'll be concrete or galvanized steel.
Okay, so much less impactful to the environment. Again, we don't know the exact terms until we do the science, we do the study. When I read what the Department of Fish and Wildlife said is basically as long as our science is sound, we're going to get as much mitigation as possible. And I would hope that our our science is sound.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. When you were making your presentation this evening, you you used the words will be allowed. I I don't see that in this MOU. Can you point it out to me, please?
It's as close, it it says in here is that third bullet, will consider removal as all or part of the required mitigation.
It didn't say will be allowed. So we don't really know. Consider is not allowed. And consider is not a guarantee in any form. So what we are really looking at is taking our citizens' money and rolling the dice. Taking our citizens' money of a hundred and thirty thousand to take this, to mitigate this and hoping, hoping that they will consider this. We are spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, rolling the dice, gambling and taking a risk with our citizens' money. And if we did it at the time that we were actually putting in the home port, the risk would not be as great. Because we would be doing it all at the same time, right?
Agreed. If we do it all at the same time, there will be zero risk because we will not, we will only be able, we will receive a permit that says for this mitigation, you shall be able, allowed to do this project.
Well, this seems like only common sense that we would wait until we get a shall, not a maybe consider, not a maybe consider. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes. Jeff is, I'm Director of Langham, is the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. The only people that we need to get approval from or can only, that they have to approve our mitigation. Is there the Corps of Army Engineers and other agencies? And we don't have any letter from them guaranteeing either.
You're correct. There are other agencies. This is the only agency that we need city council approval for. We did receive in October a letter from the Corps authorizing the Jerkovich Pier to be demolished through a permit process, nationwide permit process twenty seven. And through that process, US Army Corps, which includes National Marine Fisheries, would provide the city mitigation credits.
You know, respectfully, Director Langham, we've been speaking about this for months. And you got the letter from Department of Army Corps of Engineers in October and up until today, just six hours before this meeting, that letter wasn't shared with anybody. So I have issues with another agency we'll have to get approval from. If there is money in the twenty twenty two budget for permitting and planning, if we wanted to do our very best to get that permitting and planning rolling, when do you estimate, I guess it's a question for Tony as well, that we could get that permit rolling? And once we get the permit rolling and applied for, then the mitigation can be included in that permit request. Is that right? So when do you see that we could quickly, if 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 staff was directed by administration to do that, how quickly could we do that?
Well, I've had some preliminary discussions with David L. Consulting Group, who is the group, the designers who have moved this project and permitting through the federal process and the state process and did all of the federal, local and state permitting for the Ansich Waterfront Park itself. I asked them what they thought their timeline would be, or what a good timeline would be to begin design and permitting of commercial fishing home ports in early twenty twenty two, January or February. And they agreed that we could likely get through the federal permitting process by about January or February of next year and then go out to bid and be under construction in the fish window that be, construction window that begins July fifteenth of twenty twenty.
The Army Corps of Engineers prevents us from doing any of that work until the month of July. Anyway, is that correct?
The Army Corps and Department of Fish and Wildlife, the state and federal government.
So we'd be, we'd be rolling along come July. So it's for all those reasons that I oppose signing this memorandum of understanding. I would need a better guarantee. And I'm a little bit disappointed that we've been told that how many hours it took to negotiate this memorandum of understanding and how many staff hours and we even paid a consultant, if I'm not mistaken, like thirty thousand dollars. It begs the question, if we would have taken all that effort and directed it toward getting the permitting, we'd be sitting pretty. We might be in the water this summer. So I, again, I'm just gonna vote no.
Councilmember Haverso.
Yeah, Director Langham, you said it, the agency said it's likely. That was your word?
The DF, the Department of Fish and Wildlife?
Yeah.
I was quoting their statement, their memorandum of understanding. Will, the bullets that I read, or the bullet I read was the third bullet on the second page at the bottom. DFW will consider removal of the Jerkovich Pier as all or part of the required mitigation for construction of the fishing home port.
Right. And I mean, it seems we're looking for a one hundred percent guarantee it. Consider, of course, doesn't offer a one hundred percent guarantee, but the word likely also does not offer a one hundred percent guarantee. It's likely gonna happen, but it may not. I could consider doing something, but I might not. Am I, am I wrong in reading that?
The word consider has a variety of meanings and uses.
And in this, when they say will consider removal of the Jerkovich Pier as all or part of the required mitigation, and the word will, you know, it's, I don't know, I think that's, it will consider, I mean, that, if I say I will do something, I'm I'm gonna do it unless I'm a liar. So, I mean, we're looking for one hundred percent guarantees, but either language here that I've heard, I don't hear that. But I don't know.
And my reading of it and my belief about it is, it is one hundred percent that they will look at the removal of the Jerkovich Pier for all the appropriate mitigation based upon the science. The word consider in this particular use is along the lines of something where you you say by signing this document, we consider you have ha, as having finished all the requirements for whatever it is. So when, for example, you buy a house and you have a whole bunch of documents you have to sign, other information you have to submit, and when you submit that last piece of paper saying, now that you've submitted this last piece of paper, we consider your application complete. It's not, I'm thinking about it. It's, you've done everything you were told to do. That is the way, the usage of the word consider in here, that's how I interpret it.
And I'd like to add to that because the word considered in the bullets of that section refer, reference back to the second sentence in the first paragraph of that section. It says, this MOU documents agreement between DFW and the city regarding consideration of the Jerkovich Pier's mitigation. So they're tying the two together by considering those two together. So that's how that, that's, that's how, as Mr. Piesacki said, that it's connecting the two and it's in lieu, or or in addition to because of the agreement we're signing.
If the word consider had been taken out and the word deem had been installed in there, we'd be able to deem removal of the Jerkovich Pier's all or part of the required mitigation. That sounds a little bit stronger, doesn't it?
I certainly agree that the wording could have been better. It took us a long time to get this draft MOU, this final MOU, call it, from Fish and Wildlife. We were pulling teeth. The mayor had several phone calls. We enlisted the help of our lobbyists of a representative of the governor's office. And when we finally got this, knowing the timing that we had, well, even regardless of that, we were told, this is the wording, we're done, don't bring it back to us with any kind of changes. This is the document.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment. That's okay, there's still time for deliberation. And you, council still has time to speak. So were there any comments turned in?
This time, Your Honor, the answer is yes.
Okay.
I will go ahead and read this. It is a letter to city council members from Guy Hoppin and Greg Lovrevich. Probably pronouncing that incorrectly, and I apologize. It's regarding risk mitigation for Ansich Home Port. It's dated twelve seven of twenty twenty one. It has come to our attention that the city is encouraging premature removal of valuable mitigation, the quote, dilapidated Jerkovich Pier unquote, jeopardizing its future use for the Ansich Home Port. The MOU before you tonight does not contain language that guarantees Jerkovich dilapidated pier, again in quotes, future mitigation value. Then in quotes, by signing the proposed memorandum of understanding, MOU, from the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, WDFW, the city emphasize that, emphasis added here, may be allowed to use some or all of the dilapidated pier removal as future mitigation for the proposed commercial fishing float system, City Gig Harbor memorandum of understanding. In addition to the absence of a WDFW mitigation guarantee, the city has neglected to secure mitigation guarantees from other necessary federal agencies involved in the Army Corps of Engineers engineering permit process, including the Corps and National Marine Fisheries S and NMFS. Securing offsite project mitigation while feasible would be time consuming and very expensive. It is fiscally irresponsible to risk existing onsite mitigation. To absolutely ensure that peer mitigation value not be squandered, we ask that city council members not sign the MOU and to leave the dilapidated pier intact for its mitigation used during the Ansich Home Port project and permit process. The Ansich Home Port project and permit process can begin immediately and will result in the dilapidated pier's removal in the not too far distant future anyway. And sincerely, Mr. Hoppin, Mr. Lovrevich.
Thank you. Were there any other written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, now open up the public comment for the audience or for people online. Is there any, either push star nine, star six, or is there anyone from the audience? Okay, I will close the public comment and go back to council for deliberation. I would like to say this MOU from the Fish and Wildlife would have not taken so long if they were really not serious about it. We've spent four years trying to clean up our bay. I I I was hoping that council cared about cleaning up our bay because this dock is crumbling into our bay right now. And it's an eyesore. And if you you may not have much to mitigate. Right now, you actually have something to mitigate. If it, if the, if it keeps crumbling into the bay, they're not going to give you credit for something that's not there. So then you're going to have your concrete mitigation on the tide flats. You know, there, there's, there's, we're talking about what, seventy feet of extra? Even even when we went through with council years ago, I mean, with the fishermen years ago, they said to us when we were talking about the docks, they said, we can find you mitigation, we can find you mitigation. It's, 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 it will be discouraging if you have a ribbon cutting of the paddle dock and you've got this liability and this eyesore on our bay right there that everyone has to walk back. This is an opportunity, we've worked four years to remove this. It will be discouraging if council doesn't see an opportunity. Yes, nothing's going to be a hundred percent for sure. But it's going to be very sad if you, if you leave something that you may not even have anything to mitigate. So that's all I have to say. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Question to Director Langham. Is that correct that if the pier fell into the water and that we would not have anything to mitigate? I, it's my understanding that, yes, you could still mitigate that. Is that true?
We would still be able to mitigate it. It might be different types of mitigation, but we would still be able to use that as mitigation because it's something that is still covering.
So we could still use it. We were all, earlier today, as a part of research that we did, we were all sent a letter from a former employee of the city who for decades was the go to fellow for over the water mitigation waterfront access. All these things, he's probably the most well respected expert in the state and certainly was in in Gig Harbor. And in that letter, he read both the Army Corps of Engineers, he read the letter from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And it was his opinion that would be foolhardy to sign on for this tonight. So I also want to rely upon his expertise.
Just for the record, I did not read his email or letter because he did not request us to do so.
Councilmember Heim.
Yeah, in in the letter that was just read, I don't understand how doing this jeopardizes the home port. Could you explain that to me?
Not to put words into the letter writer's mouth, but my assumption is that what they're saying is if you don't get one hundred percent mitigation from the removal of the Jerkovich Pier, it just means there's going to be more expense for the home port when you build it because it's going to be required to do some mitigation. That that's the best interpretation I can give you.
Okay, so the the jeopardy here is not to the existence of the home port, it's to the finances of the home port.
It's to the design, it's to the mitigation that we're required, and yes, to possibly the finances. Because permitting the whole thing together is doable and it will result in the Jerkovich Pier going away and the new home port being built. The question is, is what kind of mitigation are you going to be allowed to take credit for? And is that the same that you would have? And is that the same that you would have gotten if you'd done the whole thing together? They're assuming in their letter that we won't get as much as we possibly could if we waited and did the project later. I disagree with that.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm struggling with this, with this issue of this thing jeopardizes the, the home port. I, I don't see that. Uh, in fact, I'm, I'm amazed at the discussion here. The letter that was sent, that you sent out just recently from Fish and Wildlife, uh, these are Creosote soaked pure, uh, pieces in there, as I understand it. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong.
You are correct.
And all my green friends here, um, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is the nastiest stuff on the planet. This stuff was banned years ago. You couldn't, you couldn't use Creosote. You couldn't put it on anything, okay, let alone say, okay, now we got a chance to take it out. Well, let's debate the cost of it here or the potential cost penalty of doing that. To me, there's overwhelming, uh, logic that would suggest, you know, if we've, if you've got reasonable confidence that we can make it through this thing, not only from a, uh, a, a, a financial standpoint, but as far as cleaning up the water like now, okay? Uh, hey, it, to me, it makes infinite sense. I, I, I just, I don't see the downside risk here. I'm struggling with the downside risk. I hear a lot of words, but nobody's quantified it. Nobody said, oh yeah, this is what's going to happen. And by the way, if the mitigation, the, the, the mysterious unknown mitigation that we do have to come up with on the home port in and of itself, we're, we're, we're saying, we'll take this cost, which we know, and we'll put it against this unknown thing over here. Uh, that's bad business. That's very bad business, okay? Um, that we make those, that we couch a problem on those kinds of terms. So, uh, based on everything I've heard, uh, basically I'm, I'm supportive of this thing called, hey, let's go for it.
Councilmember Franch.
Well, Councilmember Heims, you, you would think that logic may play a, a role in some of these other agencies, um, being more willing to give us guarantees that we will get credit for the mitigation, but we're not getting any kind of clear-cut guarantee from them. And, uh, that's unfortunate because you would think that we are taking Creosote pylons out. They would be more than happy to give us assurances, but, um, you know, uh.
First thing, just one, they've never had this happen before. Just so you know, this is, they've actually never had someone that wanted to clean up before they put something out. So it's amazing now for wanting to clean up the bay, just so you know, that's one reason. They've, they've never had this happen before.
Well, and you would think that since we are willing to clean up the bay, that they would be more than willing to give us guarantees on the credit. But, um, that aside, um, I, I cannot see uh, taking out this mitigation for the home port on the chance that we're going to get credit for the demolition of the pier. Um, I, it's, it's unfortunate. Staff's put a lot of time into it. I didn't even know that we had spent consultants' money on it. Um, so I'm sorry for that, but I think in the long run, given the, and I know that part of the argument was, well, we're going to be mobilizing for the kayak, uh, float installation that, um, therefore it's going to be more cost effective now, but it will be, when we mobilize to do the home port construction, the crews will be there. So I don't see a whole lot of cost savings there. So without the, without the guarantee, um, of the mitigation, um, I can't support moving forward with it.
Uh, Councilmember Dinson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will be brief because I 100% agree with Councilmember Franch. I thought he said it very well. I mean, I think all of us, I don't want to speak for all of us. I would certainly love to see the dilapidated pier take, taken down. I would love to see the water is as clean as possible. But I just don't think that we can take the risk. I think this MOU has, has come a long way. I think it's awfully close. Um, but I'm not prepared to take the leap of faith, given the difficulty in securing mitigation these days. And we've heard that if we can permit it together, we've got the best chance of capturing the most mitigation from the Jerkovich Pier. So although this, this probably would work out just fine for us, I don't want to make that assumption. I don't want to take that leap of faith. And it sounds like if we move quickly through as quickly as possible, the design and permitting as quickly as the agencies will allow us to, it's possible that we could mitigate this pier in a year and a half and, and build the commercial fishing home port pier is what I'm, what I'm hearing. So we're not looking years in, in the future. This has been around a long time. You know, I'm certainly for moving forward as quickly as possible to get that mitigated and get the commercial home port pier constructed at the same time.
Councilmember Abersold.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I got a question. I, I apologize, you know, for my ignorance here, but I haven't been down on this dock. And so when I hear that it's dilapidated, it's fallen in the water, is it a public safety hazard? I mean, are people going across this thing? Could they also fall through? I mean, do we need to worry about that risk as well?
No, it has been shut down to access since two, before 2017.
Okay, good. Um, to the mayor's comment about if, if we were to take this thing down, clean it up, and then I guess we will be doing work later in life. To me, that, that, I, you know, I follow the carpenter's rule, measure twice, cut once. It kind of feels like we will be doing a job and then we're going to have to go in and do a job again. So I'm, I'm still kind of weighing here, uh, as far as my, my thoughts. But, um, is that correct? That we would be, if we, if we decided to do this now, um, you know, we're going to have, it's going to relate to future work that we could just do it all at once?
To be clear, we, we could award the contract that's next on the agenda for removing the Jerkovich Pier. And then we would come back to council next year with a contract to build commercial fishing home port floats. The alternative would be to not award the contract to remove the pier, Jerkovich Pier and instead wa- award one contract sometime next year that will do both remove the Jerkovich Pier and construct the commercial fishing home port floats under one contract.
Okay, and I guess, I'm sorry for one last question. So all the work that's been done, would that have just been thrown out the window? Or could we take that work and apply it to, uh, work in the future, two years from now?
We will be able to use most of that information. It won't be 100% because we still have to go back and apply for new permits. But we've already done the, uh, surveying of literally topographic survey. Uh, but we've also done vegetation surveys and we've already submitted and put together biological assessments. And a lot of that information will be able to be copied, pasted. There might, there will be some updating that we'll have to do. But the time to do that will be much shorter. And National Marine Fisheries and US Army Corps and Department of Fish and Wildlife have already seen essentially half the project already. They've seen the demolition and we would then put that into what they use for mitigation calculators and compare that to the new overwater coverage for the commercial fishing home port floats. So, long answer to no, it's not going to all be thrown away.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, I have a, a question for Councilman Franch. He's, he's probably the best one in the room to answer it. Uh, Councilman Franch, how long do you think that Creosote, Creosote piling has been in that water?
I, I actually, the, with the Jerkovich family, we actually built that dock on that structure. And then Spudoni Brothers put the pavement over it. So yeah, those Creosote pylons have been in there probably over 100 years.
Okay, so they've been in 100 years. I don't think 18 months is going to add that much more, uh, to the contamination of the, the bay. And as a whole, we've been decontaminating the bay, uh, for the last several decades. So we're much better off than we were 30 years from now. 18 months, when we take that off, out, we'll be that much better. So again.
So your honor, with the lack of a motion in a second, council is going to keep making statements and going around in circles saying that you, you're staying your position. So, um, to get things moving along, I, I would ask a council member to make a motion. And if there is none, then we move on to the next item.
Councilmember Heims.
Yeah, I'm moved to approve the, uh, uh, mayor signing the memorandum of understanding for the Antis Park Advanced mitigation.
There's a second. Okay, I do have to say I'm embarrassed to our citizens, uh, and the community that we don't have, uh, the care to clean up our waters and save things. And this is exactly kind of what I meant about special interests with council. So I'm very embarrassed. We will go on. So number seven is dead. Is that correct?
But what, I, I would still like to give a brief staff report.
Okay, um, Councilmember Rodenberg, unless you have something to say. Can you turn your light off?
So, yes, so item number seven on your agenda is for award of a public works contract for removal of the Jerkovich Pier associated with the Antic Park Advanced mitigation. Um, with the MOU not being approved by council, um, I would recommend that there be no motion to approve a public works contract. Instead, we will, staff will come back to you in January with a resolution to reject all bids.
Okay. I don't see any objections from them, so go ahead and do that. Count. Council reports, comments. Uh, Park Commission meeting of December 1st, Councilmember Abersold.
Yes, thank you. Uh, let me also just say, it's been my pleasure serving, uh, as a liaison for the Parks Commission in this, uh, board. I hope that that work continues. I think it's a good thing and I hope that, um, I guess all of our boards have liaisons. So whoever thought that idea was a brilliant person. Uh, Parks Commission meeting, meeting in December 1st, the minutes were passed and approved. Uh, Lynn Stevens is a member of the Arts Commission and she is now a liaison, uh, to the Parks Commission. She was present. Uh, Mayor Kuhn presented info about the land purchase that we have discussed. Uh, Mary Barber went over the pros plans update. Ben Coronado, uh, talked about the open house survey that there were over 200 respondents. Roger Henderson spoke about the goals and policies. Uh, Mary Barber, um, discussed the work session that we had with council. They're preparing for that. Ben, um, or Commissioner Coronado, uh, spoke about the gig on the go, walking in the trails plan. Uh, Director Langham, uh, gave background on, can't read my, my notes here, scratch, chicken scratch. So whatever Jeff did, it was great. Yeah, Matthew Keigho, um, oh, I guess maybe he is, um, been hired as, as our new parks manager. And maybe I wasn't supposed to say that. I don't know. I can't remember, but it's my last night here, so whatever. Let's see. Yeah. That concludes that.
All right, thank you. Uh, Planning Building Committee.
Best report ever, Councilmember Abersold.
Give, give me a plaque.
Okay. Planning and Building Committee, uh, December 6th, uh, Gary Glenn came back to us from the uh, Downtown Waterfront Alliance, uh, with the updated, uh, downtown parking study results. And basically downtown parking now is approaching the record levels in the summertime that it was in 2019. Um, so we're, we're going back up again. While the street parking, uh, basically is, uh, fairly highly utilized, in fact, very highly utilized during that peak period. Uh, some of the other parking, which is not public at this time, private lots, marinas, churches in the downtown area have, uh, uh, very low, in most cases below 50% utilization rates in these peak periods, which opens up the idea of gee, if we could figure out a way to utilize the unused space, uh, in those periods, uh, we could basically, uh, resolve our future parking problem, which we will have in terms of public parking. So, uh, there was discussion on that. I think there was an endorsement of basically the, the concept that Gary was putting forth to us. And, uh, we advised Gary to go back to the Waterfront Alliance and basically get more, uh, dissemination of these results. This is going to require, anything in this, this type of an activity is going to require tremendous cooperation a- amongst the various downtown businesses. Those that have excess parking in certain periods of time, uh, are going to have to agree to, yeah, they can utilize this. There may be funding involved, uh, or transfer of funding involved. Uh, but anyhow, just to get out there with the concept, it would be crazy for us to consider, uh, asphalt and cement to expand, uh, parking downtown. And I don't know where we would expand it to, uh, when we're sitting on top of vacant lots down there in these peak periods. So this is going to be involve a lot of, uh, skillful discussion and negotiation, particularly on the part of the downtown business and the waterfront alliances. Uh, city, uh, has agreed, uh, the, uh, 20, 20, 20 piece, Plasecki has agreed that, uh, we will support in any way that we can on the, uh, on this effort, okay? But I think the lead will lie with the businesses and the waterfront alliance. Uh, that was probably the big item there. We also had a discussion on the employment target for Vision 2050. We've agreed previously on 2000, uh, oh, I should say 1,000 dwellings and 2,200 population increase over the period from 2020 to 2044, I think are the magic numbers. Um, employment is, is, uh, somewhat vague. Let me put it that way. In terms of the process that is utilized to come up with employment, uh, where we came out is that will be continued to be analyzed and discussed. But I think there was general agreement with, within the committee. Uh, when in doubt with, uh, uh, PSRC and, and other organizations, start out low and we'll go from there. And that's the committee report.
Thank you. And we had our board and commission candidate review committee meeting on December 13th. Councilmember Abersold.
Yes, uh, we had our meeting this afternoon. We approved our consent agenda. We had five candidates, uh, for two positions on the Parks Commission. Uh, they were all excellent candidates. We had Amanda Badgett, Babich, Georgina Armstrong, Joe Buckley, Stephanie Lyle and, uh, Stace Gordon. And our committee recommended, uh, both Stephanie Lyle and Georgina Armstrong to the board's, uh, Parks Commission. So that includes my report.
Councilmember Wu.
We're on council comments now?
You are.
Yes. So I would just like to thank, uh, Mayor Kuhn and council members, uh, Franch and Heims and, uh, Abasal. It's been a pleasure working with you for four years. And the policies that you voted on and that you created will, uh, serve you well and serve the citizens and serve our city well. So thanks for all the time that you put in. And, uh, you've been a great benefit to the city. Um, to the new council members coming in, I look forward to working here with you. Hey, council member, council member almost. Um, Henderson, I look forward to working with you since you're the only one who's here and Mayor Markley. I'm excited to have you here. So, uh, I look forward to great four years with you. Um, I'm excited and I guess everybody's seen, hopefully on Facebook, the latest harbor art project with the carved bear and the log. And it's really cute. It's like mama bear and her baby bear. And if you look at the end of the log, there's a bear butt. And it's just a wonderful thing. It's out here in Grandview Forest Park. So I think it's getting a lot of play and a lot of sharing on Facebook, which is wonderful. I'd also like to thank, uh, Director Langham and City Administrator, um, Tisecki. Um, I know that you're working on a letter of intent for. Pasecki, I know that you're working on a letter of intent for Whisper. West Sound Partners for Ecosystem, Ecosystem Recovery has grant money available. And there has to be a letter of intent by January the 10th. And I understand that you guys have been working on that. So thank you very much. And I think that. So Director Landham, thank you very much. And hopefully we can use that, hopefully we'll be awarded a grant. And we can use that money for future projects like Donkey Creek. Or we can also use that money perhaps on retroactive things like we've done for the purchase of the North Creek Phase One. So thank you very much for working on that. I have to talk about the monument in Soundview Forest. I'm very concerned that we should have any monument anywhere with council members' names on it. I don't think that's appropriate. And if we want to put some sort of monument in Soundview Forest with the date that it was purchased. And the name of it, I think that's certainly appropriate. But, uh, you know, I'm a public servant. I work for the citizens of Gig Harbor. And this is my job. This is what I do. And I don't think that my name belongs on a monument. And because we're going to all be voting and working on projects, whether it's the sports complex. Phase one A B, phase one B, are we going to have our names up there? I don't think that's appropriate anywhere. So I, I don't know what we can do to stop this, but I certainly would like not to have any names on this plaque that's going to go on this monument. It just does not seem appropriate. It certainly wasn't transparent. It hasn't been before the council before. And I, I, you know, if I was a citizen, I just would think these people are blowing their own horn. And I, I don't really appropriate, I don't think that's appropriate. So, so can we stop this?
I will, I will work to change the writing. Just so you know, this was, first thing, it's not a monument. And it actually was a citizen that brought this idea forward. So, um, so you're incorrect to say a citizen wouldn't like it when it was brought on by a citizen. It's not a monument. So I will work with the designer to make it so council names are not on there.
Thank you very much. I think that's more appropriate that it's, it talks about the thing rather than the people who made this happen. Other than that, uh, happy holidays. Merry Christmas, everybody. So see you next year.
Councilmember Markley.
Thank you. Yes, I also wanted to say thank you to the outgoing council members, Councilmember Himes. We're going to miss your dedication to planning and building. And the P C R C, P S R C, all the things, all the building things you've been doing. You have been invaluable in, in researching these items to bring to our attention. And so thank you so much for that work. Councilmember Frannich and Councilmember Abersold, thank you so much for your dedication to our city over the last four years. We're going to miss you both. Mayor Kuhn, I just have nothing but thanks and respect for how you have handled this transition. And how you have been helping me and meeting with me and preparing me to take, take the reins. And it just, it means a lot. I, I, I love that we can be an example, that politicians can actually get along. And we can work together. And I think it's just only going to benefit the city going forward. I certainly wasn't planning on being unopposed, but it afforded me a unique opportunity to learn the job and, and be really prepared for January 1st. And you were a big part of that, as well as City Administrator Pasecki. And all the staff that have just been, that have met with me and, and been, you know, just helping me to prepare. So I'm really excited. I'm excited to carry on shape. I, it's the best group of people ever. I hope you'll pop in and visit like they said. And looking forward to carrying on the great things that you've done and inviting you to some future ribbon cuttings for honoring you for the hard work that you've done. So thank you so much.
I have a lot of respect for you and I'm sure you'll do a fine job. So thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Who was, who was the second I missed?
Thank you and good luck.